2019-46 for 2931 Page Street. I'd like to make a motion for variance approval under section 6.1.41G for two parking spots.
May I have a second?
Second.
Now, roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Peck?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approved.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Counselor, Mr. Jay Angel should be unanimously approved. Wish you the best of luck moving forward with your new project and thank you for your confidence in the city.
Thank you.
Moving forward on the new business, EB 2019-47 for special permit and variances toward Attorney George Theodoro in care of Ben Maguba, Maguee 23 Exodus Street, Section 5.1, 5.1.10, 6.1.10, and 12.1, Section B. The applicant is seeking special permit and variance approval to demolish a non-conforming garage and construct a duplex at 23 Exodus Street. The lot is in traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district and requires special permit approval under Section 12.1, Section B, for the use. Variance under Section 5.1 for minimum frontage, minimum lot size, minimum side yacht setback, front yacht setback, and minimum lot area per dwelling unit. A variance under Section 5.1.10 for minimum lot width. A variance under Section 6.1.10 for maximum curb cut and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Attorney Theodoro. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Chairman Perrin. Just as you stated, we're applying for variances and for a special permit. And I'd like to simplify it a bit. It's to build a duplex on this lot, which is a 50 by 100 square foot lot located at 23 Exodus Street. What you're going to see is some photographs that we have. And with respect to those photographs, if we could just turn it a bit. Yeah, the green button's on, yeah. So, this photograph right here shows 23 Exodus Street as it currently exists, which is an existing three-family garage on the site. And I believe it goes back to sometime in the 1960s that that was there, but I'm not positive. We haven't done the research through the building department, but this is what exists on the site right now. As you can see, the building is set back comparable to the property next door on both sides. And what you have on this side right here at 19 Exodus Street is an existing two-family. This was built in 1985, as the comments indicate, and it shifted to the left and it's set back with the parking in the front. The property on the other side is an existing two-family as well. And this property also is set back with the garage on one side and an expanded driveway on the other. Our proposal is to build a duplex on the site, which will look something like this. The duplex would be set back comparably with the other two properties in the same manner. It'll have existing garages on either side, single-family garages, with sufficient parking. We're required to have two parking spaces per unit. We will have that with the one-car garage under and another car in front of that. And there, if you take a look when we go through the site plan with Mr. Campbell, who's the engineer, we'll be able to go through and show that we'll be able to have sufficient parking for guests as well. There'd be at least two more parking spaces there. We're not sure, maybe more, but enough to accommodate this site. Parking is tight in this area. It's a densely populated area, and in order for this project to be successful, we believe we have to keep this parking on the site. I do appreciate the comments by Mr. Alvez from Department of Planning and Development to move the property up. However, that type of design is more in line than we would believe with the commercial development. This is a TMU zone. If this would be a commercial development, we would want to have property moved up front and have parking in the rear. However, in doing so, you would eliminate the garage under, which is a wonderful feature for someone who wants to park there, and it would be extremely tight for people to park in the back and access it through a driveway on the side. So, we thought that this would be the best way to do it. And also, we've just set this as an example of something where we could put sufficient screening on both sides, whatever type of screening which would be required on either side with a nice privacy fence to accommodate it for the neighbors both on both and the rear.
Excuse me, if I could remind, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off, place it on vibrate, take your calls outside. I apologize, Counselor.
I mean, that gives you an idea of the proposed development we'd like to place over there as a duplex. Part of what we do in providing this development in the city, and one of the most important things that we feel is an element of this from the development point of view and from the city's point of view, is to design and build a property that fits in with the neighborhood. You have materials that were handed out, and there is a list of a comparison chart for 23 Exodus Street, which shows the lot sizes on Exodus Street and the frontage and the type of properties on the street, whether they're a single-family or two-families. You have 7 Exodus Street, which is on the corner, which I believe is a four-unit dwelling, sitting on a 3,378-foot lot with 55 feet of frontage. 9 Exodus Street is a three-family sitting on a 5,000-square-foot lot, again with 50 feet of frontage. The lot directly next door to us is 19 Exodus Street. It's, again, on a same-size lot, 5,000-square-foot lot with 50 feet of frontage. Next to us is a two-family. That's a large lot, that's 9,750 with 100 feet of frontage. And as we go down the street, you see 39 Exodus Street, 2475 square feet with 45 feet of frontage. 43 Exodus Street is a two-family, 2475 feet of frontage, and so forth. In making this comparison chart, what I'm pointing out that in developing a duplex on this lot, it would be comparable with the other lots and it would fit in with the neighborhood character. And the neighborhood character is one of the important elements in satisfying the requirements for a special permit. Traffic flow and safety, including parking, is another element that satisfies a special permit. And given the fact that we each have a garage under in this property with other parking there, a minimum of two and probably two more at least, that we've satisfied the parking. As far as the-
Excuse me, Counselor. Sir, would you be so kind and respect the decorum of the meeting? I've asked twice whomever that cellphone. Okay, great, I appreciate that. We need the Counselor to continue. Thank you, I apologize for misdirecting that. However, we stated it twice.
With respect to any environmental impacts, we have submitted a detailed 45-page drainage report to the city. I'll bet that it came in today. We also have the design plans that were sent in as well, the corresponding with the drainage report. And what one of the suggestions that were done, and I don't want to get ahead of myself at all, but it came from the storm management. The engineering department said that we would comply with DPD in designing the drainage to their satisfaction. Heading back with, so, we believe that this can be done and satisfy all the requirements for a special permit for neighborhood character, impact on the natural environment, and the potential impact on the city services. And where I'm going with that is, right now, you have a three-car garage that's a use over there. It's, the property is underutilized with respect to its best and potential use. Right now, the city is probably getting about $800 a year in tax revenue, when they could conceivably get $2,500 from each unit there in tax revenue. So, there's a substantial gain to the city in this. And in addition to the fact that in this community here, which is a traditional mixed-use, where right down the street there are restaurants and stores that would have a benefit from having more of a vibrant community and more of a vibrant neighborhood over there. Now, we have also gone ahead and we've submitted some signatures that you have there in front of you. And signatures, the signatures, we have quite a few signatures from Exodus Street itself. 41 Exodus, 54 Exodus, 49 Exodus, 67 Exodus, 22 Exodus, as well as the surrounding streets. So, my client went ahead and he went and he talked to the community. We did go to the Centerville Neighborhood Association last week. We met Monday night. We had a heated discussion that came over primarily with the parking over there. I won't deny it, there are members here from that organization who are going to come up and they're going to discuss the parking. They're going to discuss the fact that once this parking garage is removed, which is used for parking for, in part, for an apartment building across the street, that once that's gone and that use is gone, where are they going to park? Well, all I can tell you is, the development that we're proposing is going to have the required parking, more than the required parking to satisfy it. And I believe if you see the photograph of what we've done, the best part about it is superimposing it on the site. It's set back comparable to the two direct-to-butters. So, we believe that we've satisfied that. I don't think that we should get hung up on the number of variances that we're looking at. I know that when we look at the number of variances and we talk about that itself, we're looking to do something to permit something that it's going to benefit the neighborhood, that it's going to fit in with the neighborhood, and as a result of that, the net impact to the neighborhood and the community is positive. And I want to point out to the fact that we have a multi-family neighborhood there. And it's interesting for the fact that, and probably maybe not just unique to this neighborhood, but in other neighborhoods as well, when you step foot onto Exodus Street, you're a neighborhood business. You walk into another lot there, you're in the traditional mixed-use. When you go up a few houses up Exodus Street, you're in the traditional two-family. So, there's a mixture there. When you take a look at the uses along Exodus Street, they're all residential uses. To ask my client to go ahead and come back and try to fit in a traditional mixed-use with the commercial use on the first floor, moving the property up, and then having residential on the second floor, I don't think that that would mix in well with this neighborhood at all. And I think, I believe that this is the best use. We have the parking on the site. I believe this can be something that can fit in with our zoning laws and not be detrimental at all to our zoning laws as well or derogate at all from them as well. Another important element here is, we'll go back into, which I mentioned, I seem to mention it all the time, is that the city plan for the city of Lowell asks for increased housing. If you Google "a housing crisis in Massachusetts", you're going to see a number of articles that come up throughout the Commonwealth about there being a housing crisis in the state. And in order to deal with that housing crisis, in these articles, they talk about cities and towns producing or delivering units. And the way units are delivered from our side here is through the private sector, through someone like Mr. Bogwa going ahead and developing this property, spending a great deal of money on engineering and other elements to develop this and put this out onto the market. And when it's done in a responsible way, and I respect the decision of this board, where we can go ahead and fit something into the community, I ask you that you grant the variances for this. And what I'd like to do is have Mr. Campbell briefly describe the site for you and perhaps be available to ask questions with respect to the site and the building located on the site. And as I said, the drainage report was submitted as well as the plans themselves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Sorry, I'm tied up. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Paul Campbell. I'm the surveyor and the engineer of record here. So, 23 Exodus Street, it's an existing 5,000-square-feet lot with a 50 feet of frontage. So, four of the variances that we're asking for are just the nature of the existing lot. So, the curb cut, there's an existing about 20 feet curb cut there today. We're not proposing to change it at all, but modern requirements require 25, so we just want to leave that alone. That's sufficient for what we need today. Frontage, 80 feet is required in the zone. We have an existing lot of 50 feet, so we're asking for that variance. And lot size is 6,000 square feet. We're at 5,000. Lot width, we're at 50 feet. It's required 64. So, those four are just kind of just existing on the lot as it is today. A couple, two other ones I thought we had met, but the usable open space, it's 250 square feet per dwelling unit. Total open space on this project is 2,300 square feet or so. I know usable open space, you don't, you can't count yards or anything like that, but 500 square feet over 5,000 lot is 10%, and it's a significant portion. So, to address the parking issue that I know was an issue in this neighborhood, we, like Mr. Theodoro said, we pulled the building back to, we met the front and rear setbacks, but we pulled the building back and ate up some open space to provide some extra space for additional parking beyond what you see in the zoning. So, and like I said, the front setback, we're consistent with the two direct-to-butters. So, that's a variance there. But, you know, everything else we met. Use, it's allowed in that zone, parking, lot coverage, building height, those are all what we met for the zoning. And like Mr. Theodoro said, I submitted a drainage report today. There's some drainage comments, so I came up with a drainage design that'll, it's designed for the 100-year storm, so in the event of a 100-year storm, it's sized appropriately to withhold the entire 100-year storm. So, there's less water coming off of the property in the proposed condition as there is today, and the rate will also be reduced. We have to dig test pits to do that, to confirm it, but I believe that's something that we can handle as a condition of approval prior to getting a building permit. So, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the site or the design, and I look forward to hearing your decision.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Anything further at this time, Counselor? Happy to say I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? If you wish to speak in opposition, you can approach the lectern.
I'm Roger Norman. I live next door, and they're saying it's a two-family. Mine's is a four-family. I had to go to the zoning board to get the variance. If I would have ripped my garage down before I built it, I would have had to be at the zone, whatever the variance was. I think it was 10 feet at the time. What they're doing is, most houses on that street don't have driveways. If you drove down there, Barker Street, Exodus Street, there's very few off-street parking. I have off-street parking. Now, if they put parking the way they want, they're not going to have any green space. And there's no green space. I was told I had to keep green space. They're going to put a three-story building there with a roof. It's going to be 10 feet from my house. Suppose they didn't going to put trees there, where are they going to grow? Into my windows? That was told you couldn't build on it because it was an undersized lot. Somebody was going to buy it. They said you can't build on it. When he bought it, it was bought with the house across the street for parking. If you went by there, you seen lines that somebody marked with numbers on it. That's people's parking spots. Once they build that, what is he going to do? Hot-top the whole front yard to make parking spots? To me, it's going to be a blight on, it's going to be an odd building. None of the buildings are that tall on that street, other than the triple-deckers. To me, it's going to downgrade that area. Yeah, it's going to give you more taxes, but it's not going to make any extra parking spots. Where they going to put the snow? There's no place to put snow. Everybody's thrown in the street now. You know, I mean, no matter what I say, you're going to do what you want to do. But to me, it's not going to be any better, make the neighborhood any better. To me, it's going to make it worse. No matter what I say, I'm all done. Thank you.
What number?
I'm 35, right next door.
Thank you, sir. Did you sign in?
No.
Thank you very much.
There's no pen.
No pen, Matt?
There's a pen.
Yeah, there is. Thank you.
One other thing. He's going to sell these and he's going to be gone. We got to live with it. That's what I don't like. If he was going to live there, that's a different story. But we got to live with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name's Jason Prevo, Sr. I'm a tenant of Mr. Norman. I lived on the street for 22 years. I've never seen these gentlemen on the street. So, to sit there and say it's going to better the neighborhood, I've lived there for 22 years. I lived across the street on 30 Exodus Street for 13. And when Roger's mom passed, he asked if I can move over because he's the only, one of the only people in the neighborhood that mows his lawn, waters his lawn, paves his driveway, paves the sidewalk. He's one of the only ones in the neighborhood that takes care of the property. And I've grown up with the people that lived across the street. I can't unfortunately see the picture, so I can't show you. But right now, across the street, there's a four-family apartment that he owns with four spots in front. And across where he wants to build is about eight to nine other vehicles from that building. One tenant has two pickup trucks, a car, a wagon that he uses for works with about 15 ladders on top. Everybody has two or more cars. I am married with two kids. Unfortunately, my back is messed up. My wife is at work. I still need two cars. So, right now, if he takes this property that was allotted to go with the property across the street for parking and makes that, now all his four tenants, the existing tenants that are in a lease, have to look for parking somewhere else. And it's always in front of our house. Our driveway gets blocked. Our street has no room for any of this. I've lived on it for 22 years. I've watched people fight over parking in the winter. I watched his tenants' cars get towed out of that lot because the people across the street wanted somewhere to put their snow and illegally had the whole lot towed, where they had to come back and drop the cars back off. It is a fight in this neighborhood for parking. And I don't see where he's going to tell these other eight or nine cars to park on top of these people. Yes, these people moving in may have a spot, but his existing tenants won't. They will all have one spot each, and they all have two or more cars. So, pretty much, you're telling him, if he gets a spot, because the city will get extra taxes, his existing tenants are going to have to suffer and make the rest of the neighborhood suffer to park in our spots. It's, I don't know who thinks it's going to be good for the street, but you have other people that are going to speak up on our behalf. And again, I've lived here 22 years. We've done nothing but try to make this neighborhood better. And this is going to make it hectic for everybody, every working family. And I don't even know if it's going to drop the property value around the neighborhood now. And if that does, it's going to be less taxes for the city. That I don't know. That's for you guys to discuss, but I am just letting you know it is going to make the street unbearable in the winter. Unbearable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
My name is Fred Saluki. I live right behind Mr. Ben Mogal. And his tenant, he legally put inside "no parking" because they are afraid somebody will take their spot. As Mr., you know, people talk about this street. There's no parking at all in this neighborhood. People fighting to get a parking at night or daytime, Sunday, doesn't matter what time. And average family has three cars, average. And nobody, never mind their friends come over. I've been renting for the last four years, and I know how they are. The tenants, they come move in, they have friends, girlfriend, boyfriend, they're moving, and they park their car wherever they want. And two-car parking isn't going to be enough for nobody. And, you know, as I said, this street has no driveway, houses have no parking, and this is going to be a more mess. People, I have tenant, they're moving out because they have no place to park. After one year, they move because there's no place to park. And this person is going to come and build another house next door that his own tenant have no place to park. And they park wherever they can find. And he wants to build a house there so it can take away from their parking. Why don't you use the place that he has to have his tenant park there? Why want to make, build another building to have more people move there? And then you can't control people to where to park. Okay, I have a parking, I have a driveway, but you can't block the other person because it's one-car parking. So, somebody going to park behind the other car, they can't, they won't do it. They go park the street. So, I'm very opposed to this proposal. And it's going to make it even more difficult for people to live there, as always was. Anyway, for the last five years, I've been renting this place, and I lived there myself. And, you know, every time you go there, you're not going to find a place to park. You have to go around the block. Maybe you get lucky to find some park in some other street, two blocks from your house, to park there. So, this, you know, one parking, two parking, as I said, it's not going to work. It's not going to do it. And it's going to be a mess again, as I said. More people are going to move out of that neighborhood because it's a fight over parking every night, every day, every Sunday, every Saturday, every time. Morning, nights, doesn't matter. And as I said, this is a very bad proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening.
Hello, my name's Lorraine McQuon, and this is-
I'm Kimberly McQuon. We live in 21 Exodus Street, so we live right next to where this building is going to be. So, the first issue is parking. My parents, every winter, have to deal with people parking in front of our parking area. And we have about four cars. So, every winter, my dad has to go out and yell at someone to "please get off". And it's always like the tenants across of us, like 22, 24, 26, and 28 Exodus Street. And because they have just the street parking, and they cannot park in the street because the city will require them to not park there because when they're plowing the street, they need them to be out. Also, we have a backyard, and pretty much where our backyard is, we're enclosed in by the people to the left of us, and it's a three-story building, and the people behind us, and it's another three-story building. And if this other house, which is going to be another three-story building, it's pretty much going to block all sunlight that we have. It's pretty much like a jail cell backyard. Like, we usually, we have kids that live, we live in a duplex, and the people on the other side of the duplex, they have kids, and they usually go into our backyard and play. And that's their, you know, thing. Kids like to be out in the summer. It's like a 10-year-old and a 12-year-old, so, yeah, they like to play in our backyard. And I feel like we're already enclosed by two houses. If we have that third house right there, we're not really going to have much sunlight and like no one's going to want to play in our backyard anymore. And what else? Also, as I heard, as they were like, wanted to, you know, talk about the building, they said that a lot of people on our street, like Exodus Street, like 46 or 48, all signed a petition that, you know, they're going to build it. But they don't have to deal with it. We do, because we live on 21 Exodus Street. We do, 'cause we live on Twenty-One Exeter Street. And they're like, they don't really care. But we do, and we have to suffer the consequences. So that's why we're in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? If you ladies could sign in. Sir, you... One minute, please. Sir, you can reapproach if you choose at this time, just from the public...
I just wanted to say one thing. I live there. I live...I'm owner-occupied.
Okay.
So I live in the place that I built with my wife. So I didn't build it to sell it or rent it. I built it to live there.
Okay, thank you, sir. And again, for the record, that's thirty-five?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Gail Jasko, and I don't live on Exeter Street. This came to my attention at the CNAG meeting, the Senable Neighborhood Action Meeting last week. And I guess I am a senable person, born and bred, proud. But my confusion was, if you have zoning that says, you know, buildings shouldn't need to be so far off lots, lot lines, I guess seven variances seem like an awful lot to me. And I don't know anything about this stuff. But it was confusing enough to make me come here tonight, because I was like, "Okay, so why are you putting a two-family in a lot that's tiny in an area that's congested? For what reason?" And I asked this gentleman the question, and it's...my interpretation, and I could be wrong, was that it was really just for the benefit of the person building it, so there wouldn't be a single family, there'd be two-family. And that's double the income. And that kinda got under my skin, I have to tell you, because that's not a good reason to damage a neighborhood. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is not closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is not closed. But matter of public record, we do have a letter submitted in the package, assigned by twenty-seven neighbors. Those who live on...of these twenty-seven, they live on streets Barker Street, Exeter Street, Dalton Street, and Fisher Street. So those will be submitted into the record. Any other comments, counsel, before we open up to the board?
Yes, I'd just like to make a couple of points. That my client does not own Twenty-Two Exeter Street, which is across the street. He does not own it. I could look into the assessor's records and give you the name, but it's not Mr. Bugwa who owns that. So that information is incorrect. Furthermore, I said it was an issue with respect to this street or this neighborhood that's densely populated, that parking is an issue, and that what we've done and what we presented is sufficient parking for this project with additional guest parking. We can't solve the parking throughout the neighborhood. We can't solve the parking for the gentleman who lives next door or on the other side. But we can put the sufficient parking legally on this lot. One other point I'd like to make with respect to the lot next door, Nineteen Exeter Street, is that the garage is set back already. It's there. Granted, this existing structure is gonna be taller, but that garage is already set back over there. Now, with respect to someone coming in and developing property, I don't think we should prejudge someone because they're gonna come in, develop a property, and sell it. I don't believe that's a criteria. I think that we want people to invest in neighborhoods to create housing, to create new housing, to create units, and I believe that's a good thing. And the reason why we're building a duplex is it makes economic sense for us to do that. That, given the cost that it's gonna be involved in this process, it is not worth the developer to build a single family over there. And also, if you take into account the properties along the street, there's a two-family next door, Thirty-Five Exeter Street, that's a four-family on that side. He has his parking on his lot. He's met the requirements. We're doing the same thing, and we ask you to consider that. Also, it's a small lot, but we have proposed to have landscaping in the back as a buffer, landscaping on both sides, and to create whatever we can for the minimal amount of green space. But you can't create a lot of green space there. We're in a densely populated area there, and...but we can do it tastefully, and we can do it so that the people who live there can be proud property owners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Like to open up the board at this time? Mark?
Yeah, this is always a tough one when it comes to low-ascendable. I'm a product of low-ascendable, so I sympathize with you residents. I know exactly what it is to live in a densely populated neighborhood where green space is a luxury, so is a driveway. I mean, many a times, I know all about the neighborhood arguments for people who don't have proper respect for their neighbors and take parking spaces. I haven't endured it at all. When I purchased my first home in Senable, when a parking ban was imposed, I drove my vehicle to the parking garage, just so the plows could get by. Most of my fellow residents didn't do that, but I did it because that was what was best. With respect to this particular petition, we're only talking about this gentleman's lot. And although it may have some adverse effects on the people that reside there, we still cannot violate this owner's rights with respect to his intentions with his property. Not to be argumentative, but one of the gentlemen, who, as I said, I sympathize with, you indicated that if this was owner-occupied, it would be more accepting. I don't know what the difference is, whether this gentleman lives there or two other families live there. The same parking situation is going to exist. You were also unfortunately mistaken about his ownership of the property across the street. Had that been the case, had that been the case, I might have been on your side with that one. But where he hasn't owned that property, he has no responsibility to provide parking for the guy across the street. I mean, again, every...it's a vehicle issue. Today's society, everyone has a vehicle. When you live in a densely populated neighborhood, as I have, as you do, it's one of the detriments. It's unfortunate. But we have to also consider the rights of the property owner. This project certainly fits within the character of that neighborhood. There's just no doubt about it. And I don't see green space as an obstacle to this. And I don't think that it affects the parking at all, not with respect to this property. I speak in favor of this petition.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to get a few things clarified here, if I could. The first one is the building height. You don't describe the building height in the document that was submitted as far as the site plan, so we don't really know, other than the fact that it's plus or minus forty feet.
Yeah, so I'm not the architect, but I just went by what's allowed in zoning. And with the three-story, with the garage and the two floors, we're gonna be well under the what's maximum allowed building height. So, but yeah, we're gonna be below what's the maximum allowed in that zone.
You're right, but you've got variances everywhere, and you've crowded the site significantly with this structure. So having the maximum allowed is something I don't think we wanna try to get close to here. Reality is, the buildings on either side are only two-story. So the eve is somewhere in the range of eighteen to twenty feet. And your eve is gonna be somewhere in the range of twenty-seven to thirty feet. So I think that we need to be somewhat responsible as far as not saying plus or minus forty feet. And your documents submitted don't give a building height. I think I'd like to see that on a document.
We can provide that.
And I certainly would like to see that in a document, say something like thirty-five or thirty-two or thirty feet or something in that range, to try to be sympathetic to the buildings adjacent to it. The buildings adjacent to it are set back from the street. Not at forty-seven feet, though. The two buildings adjacent to it are quite a bit less than forty-seven feet. One might be forty feet, or the other one might be forty-five feet or something. What's driving all of this dimension in the front yard here for... Because two parking spaces, only thirty-six feet.
Yeah, we set it back so that we could provide the parking up front if we needed additional parking.
But that's only thirty-six feet? So what's the additional eleven feet for?
Well, we thought if we could accommodate guest parking, we knew that in bringing the...
But two spaces is thirty-six. Three spaces, and you're not doing three spaces. You've got one in the garage, so two spaces outside of the garage is only thirty-six.
We could move the building up a bit.
That would be terrific, because you would be able to get more green space in the backyard.
We could move it up. It's not gonna...it's not gonna hamper the parking at all. We did that, 'cause we felt that we could accommodate, squeeze in some more parking over there, where parking is a problem in this area. But in order to fit this in with the properties on either side, we could move the building up.
I would love to see it moved up even as much as to thirty-six feet. If you're gonna accommodate two spaces, just accommodate two spaces. Don't do extra for the sake of less green space, because that seems to me...
Well, if we can, you know, just hearing your comments on that, we certainly could go ahead and do that without jeopardizing the project. So moving it up to thirty-six feet, still having the required parking there, and giving a little bit more green space, we could go ahead and do that.
Picking up green space is great, and I think we should try to do that. I love the fact that you have drainage structures there, because I think that we need to pay attention to that, and having that in this plan is a big bonus, so that we have taken care of onsite drainage, which is terrific. Why is the driveway twenty-four feet wide?
Again, we've got a curb cut up front that's nineteen and a half feet. So we thought, again, in order to accommodate access in and out, that we would keep the driveway a bit wider than normal. So if that's something that, in order to make this a better application, you wanna, you know...
Yeah, you'd be picking up green space again.
Okay.
Which would be a terrific thing for the neighborhood. Less pavement is always a benefit. Your parking space is only nine feet wide. Even if you were ten feet, you'd pick up a nice bonus there of green space. So you would be providing six parking spaces, and you would be off-street with six parking spaces, which I think is terrific. By right, it would be only four that would be required, and you've provided six. And you've got a plan in front of us here that shows two bedrooms or three bedrooms.
Again, we...
One and a half baths or two and a half baths. Is that what you're doing?
No, I saw those plans. I thought that the plans showed two bedrooms. And that's what we're proposing, to build two bedrooms.
So the optional plan on the room behind the garage is not meant to be a bedroom?
No, it is not.
Okay, so it's a two-bedroom, much better.
It is a two...there are two two-bedroom units.
Two two-bedroom units, great, okay.
We did not propose to have that, the...behind the garage on that first floor, we don't intend to have that. No, it was never our intention to have that as a bedroom.
Now, you've not provided a landscape plan.
The...to the extent that we provided, we showed some landscaping on the plan. It's not a per se landscape plan, but we did show the...on the site plan, we did show some of the shrubs to be planted in the rear and along both sides.
I'd like to see a landscape plan developed. And you also mentioned that there were gonna be privacy fences? That's not on the site plan at all.
No, we're proposing that, to have the privacy fences.
Right, so we need to see that on a plan, I think, if that's gonna be part of the application. The decks in the back don't provide access to the backyards. It's kind of an odd thing. Why is that?
So I...everything driving things in the back was the rear setback, so I just pulled the building back as far as possible. But if we push the building up like your suggestion, you should have access from the deck, building to the deck to the backyard, so that'll be solved.
So you could provide that on an updated site plan?
Yeah, we can update the site plan. I don't see that being a problem.
Okay. I think that whatever the development is on the site, I mean, it's...you've made a good case that the lots adjacent to it are all small lots that have been developed, the five thousand versus the six thousand. Whether it's a one-story or a one-family or a two-family, you provided off-street parking for whatever the use is there, so it wouldn't be an impact with an additional one for each unit. So the negative that I see is that we don't understand the impact it has on the surrounding neighborhood as far as the height of the building. I don't see that documented anywhere. And I do like to see that pushed forward to minimize the impact in the backyard and try to get to a landscape area in the backyard that satisfies zoning, so we have one less variance. Would be terrific, in my opinion. I see some work here. I see insufficient submission. And so I'd like to see some...another pass here, if you would, from my standpoint, to correct a few of the errors here or miss...
We certainly can move it, move the building up.
Yep.
We certainly can provide more green space...
Yep.
...to define what the height is going to be, which we should've done.
And remove that extra bedroom on the...
Right, it's...
Because we're only doing two bedrooms per unit?
We'll call...we'll define that space. It's not a bedroom.
That would help me.
Okay. I mean, because these are...it's represented as two two-bedroom units.
And then the last one is, you've got a rendering here that is very misleading.
It...it's not a rendering per se. It's a similar building that's taken and placed on...
It's shown as almost ten-foot lower than it really is.
No, but it's nothing to scale or anything like that.
Oh, then it's not really even worth looking at, because it kinda gives you the impression that's what you're gonna look at when it's built, and it's not close.
It's not. It's not. It's just done to give you an idea of where it's gonna be placed on the lot.
But you're not gonna be looking at that structure.
No, you're not.
You're looking at something much tighter, much taller than that structure.
Right.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna clarify again, Mr. Theodore. So Mr. Bugwa, he owns a property, and he's letting tenants in other buildings utilize it for parking? Is he renting it out?
That's correct. It...right now, it's a three-car...it's a three-car garage there, so it is used for parking, and he is renting it out for parking purposes.
Okay, and he's owned it since 2015?
That's correct.
So, okay. I just want...yeah, I just wanna clarify. So, yeah, I mean, he doesn't have any interest in any other property in the area? It's not for his tenants? It's rented out to other tenants?
It's rented out to other people in the area.
And now he just wants to utilize his own property to build something that he wants on his own property?
That's correct. To put it in what he believes is the best use of the property.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna clarify that, because I understand it's a very dense neighborhood, and I understand the very serious concerns of the neighbors about the parking. And it is totally understandable, especially when it's the snow and in the wintertime, the snow's involved. But, I mean, this board, I mean, we're a zoning board, we're an appeals board. We're not here to...we're not allowed to dictate what a person can or cannot do with their property. We can look at the zoning code, see if they fit the criteria, and grant them relief if necessary. necessary, or if it meets a certain criteria of either a special permit or a variance. And I think it just needs to be said, because there's been a lot going around lately about the fact that there's been several, there's numerous variances being requested on that. The fact that the number of variances that are being requested are irrelevant, just because you asked for a lot of variances, it could be, you meet all criterias, but you are a foot off, an inch off, something to that effect. Just the number of variances doesn't necessarily mean that the property cannot, this board cannot grant variances in this. To that end, I understand that Mr., you know, Mr. Theodore, and I understand, I'm gonna save my, any other comments on that. You are gonna go back to the drawing board, I presume, to-
We're gonna go back and implement the changes that Mr. McCarthy pointed out. Just, just looking at it right now, I believe it makes for a better plan. We did look at it and move that parking back and widen the driveway, and we, we wanted to put as much parking up front so that we could, so we could, you know, possibly satisfy the community over there, but in doing that, we, we made an imperfect plan. So we'll go ahead and do that. And I thank you very much, Mr. Callahan, for clarifying that, those comments with respect to the, the variances. I appreciate that.
No, that's, I just want to make sure, with the public here, it just, it seems recently that there's been a lot of emphasis from people about the number of variances that are requested on a particular piece of property. And the thing is, this board is not here. We can't make our decisions based on the number of variants, basically, the sheer number of variances that are being requested. We base our decisions based on the zoning code, what the dimensions are, what's being, what the dimensions are of the property, how the crit, how they fit the criteria, and what the relief is being granted. So I just want to make sure that, no, just for the, for the public's own, own use, so. But I would be, you know, that being said, if, you know, if you're gonna be looking to continue this matter, I mean, that would be, so we can go back on the drawing board, that would be beneficial, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank all the neighbors and the abuters who came out to speak tonight. I know it's not always an easy thing to, to speak for against a petition. I think, I think to me, my colleagues made a lot of sense. You know, we're, we're here specifically for this specific site and project. I understand the density of the neighborhood, the parking, the vehicle, all the buildup. I also grew up in Centerville, so I'm familiar with the area. You know, I think what we can control is what is on that site. And the petitioner does have all the required spots on site. I do, I do feel the burden from, from the neighbors. But in respect to this particular project, it does fit in with the neighborhood and the character, and, you know, a few of the surrounding properties are two, three-plus family units. So, so in my opinion, the project does make sense. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Philip?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, I love the, the structure, it's nice, but I have some concerns about the parking, as you can tell. You know, they, they, they have to live there, no matter how you've gotten dice in. So I consider you have up to eighteen individuals in favor of this building, but none of them are here. I don't know if you cannot get even one to come and support the project. You have a lot of folks who came to oppose it. I can probably advise if you can really work with your neighbors, because they're gonna live there. So I think if you can meet some in the middle somehow, I think that would be good for everybody. And I'm glad that, you know, you're gonna review and come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. I'd like to speak to this, this particular project, in particular, this, this petition. As you can hear, a couple of members are looking for a continuance. I think we have some tidying up to do, becomes a new plan in respect to the parking, opening up the green space. I agree with the comments earlier. I don't know who made them, but Exodus Street, I believe it was you, Counselor, is a multitude of variances from start to finish. I do agree that in this particular site, a commercial building amongst residential, I think would be catastrophic to the neighborhood. It wouldn't fit whatsoever. It's an extremely old neighborhood. I lived in that neighborhood for twenty years. I lived to forty-eight, fifty. I'm fully aware of parking in the neighborhood. It was, it's a great neighborhood, it's great neighbors. I do believe there's four to five houses on this street, including the property I had, that had two or three bay garages that were rented out over the years, and then the spots were rented, which, which helped alleviate. I think times, you know, there's ebbs and flows. At the end of that street, there, there are triple-deckers, where Marie's Variety Store is, and then adjacent lots. I do have concerns if that whole corner of Tenement comes down, where all that parking is gonna overflow. As far as twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, my memory serves me correct, across the street, if they were in a rental situation and that property owned by your petitioner, yeah, naturally, those, those would go away. But if that's, that's not the case, as you stated on the record, then I certainly believe that to be, to be true. I agree with my colleagues as, as it relates to the height and the setback. My concerns would be what's gonna happen on the backside of this property if it was to move forward. So I do think those, those need to be looked at. As far as those two homes that went up in eighty-five, I believe one went in sideways. So this is, this is a tough one for me, as far as, you know, the denseness of the neighborhood, strain on parking, increased families and the like. So I'd be really interested to see what you're gonna come through forward. I do appreciate how you're thinking forward, as usual, Mr. Campbell, for that, to alleviate if we put six out front, and you're trying to draw for guests coming on. But for me, in that, in that neighborhood, green space is at a minimum, and I think that, that holds value. I don't think anybody wants to look out their front door, or walk down their neighborhood and see hut-top from front to back, like the Shed Park tennis courts. I think, I don't think that's what we're moving to. So if we could look at, look at all those different things that most, Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Callahan brought to your attention, make those, make those changes, a landscape plan would be one.
Updated site plan.
Updated site plan to reflect this, this change in that. I'd be interested in seeing that. My thought for a continuance is one meeting.
I, I think one meeting would, would do it, yeah, and give us sufficient time to make the changes, to provide a landscaping plan. And, you know, I think that would be, if we could be efficient and get that done.
Okay.
We've already, we've already done the, the other work, the drainage report and, and all of that, so.
For the record, the drainage report and, and what you've proposed goes far beyond what most developments, you took into account that, we, you know, certainly, when it's in your neighborhood, people have concerns, pro and con, but from my standpoint, that, that's a pro, because you're looking not only to that neighborhood directly, but you're looking into the abutting neighborhoods as far as the drainage goes. And it's long-term, it's-
It, right.
It's long-term, and it, that's a benefit to the city, to be frank. It does take a lot of pressure off the system over there, so we're looking, Mr. Chairman?
It's important for the next submission of modified whatever to identify the building height.
Right, the, I have it down as the identify the building height, move the property forward, provide a landscaping plan with the privacy fences that we have proposed, and to have a, lengthen the width of the driveway. I mean, decrease the width of the driveway.
And that, my, one wish is that you meet the landscape area requirement, and not require a variance for that, but get close to it. You need to identify what you're providing, because we don't see that on any of the documents yet.
We, we'll go ahead and do that. We'll, we'll get a landscaping plan together for that, too.
Thank you. Mark?
Attorney, if, if the structure was moved forward, would you be losing parking spaces?
We'd still be able to accommodate the, the required parking and even have guest parking.
But you went above that.
We went above that because we knew that that was gonna be something that the neighborhood would be concerned about.
I, I thought that the residents would appreciate the fact that you did that. That's, that's my concern. I, I'm reflecting on the comments that I made earlier, and I hope I didn't lend the impression that I am insensitive to green space, or I'm trying to diminish the need for green space. But when I fill out my scorecard, parking space beats out green space every damn time. And it sounds as though that's what the residents want, more parking space. So that, that's why I spoke as I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments? So we're looking at November fourteenth, which is a Thursday, keep in mind for your schedules. This will be the public notice for, for the continuance. There'll be no other public notice in the newspaper or otherwise. And you're, you'll work through those conditions for change in your plan. At that point, can I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing's closed, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, on ZB two thousand nineteen dash forty-seven for twenty-three, Exodus Street, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
A rule call?
Chairman Perrin?
Continuing to November fourteenth.
Member Peck?
Approved continuance.
Member Callahan?
Continued to November fourteenth.
Member McCarthy?
Approved continuance to November fourteenth.
Member Brier?
Approved continuance.
Member Jamina?
Approved continuance.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Campbell-
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time and, and your detailed plan. No, at this time, the public hearing has been closed at the beginning of your meeting. At the next meeting, we'll open it once again, that you'll have another opportunity. You will certainly have another opportunity to speak, because it'll be a new, it'll be a revised petition.
Is anyone notified?
This is the notification tonight, sir. There's no requirement for, you'll see nothing in the paper. It'll be same time, except for it's November fourteenth, which is a Thursday, as we moved it.
Would you please talk to the person at twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-eight, if I actually would like to know?
I can't speak to that, sir. This, this petition is closed, you can, you, I didn't-
You can refer to the legal department.
Thank you for coming in. Moving forward under ZB two thousand nineteen dash forty-eight for a special permit, Stephen P. Gary Esquire Care of Citywide Properties LLC at nine fifty-six, nine fifty-eight Bridge Street, section four point five point three. The applicant is seeking special permit approval at nine fifty-six, nine fifty-eight Bridge Street. The subject property is currently a four-unit structure with sixteen bedrooms. The applicant proposes to add two units to the third floor with two bedrooms. In each third-floor unit, the applicant is proposing to maintain sixteen bedrooms and is providing sufficient off-street parking. The subject property is located in traditional single-family TSF zoning district and requires a special permit pursuant to section four point five point three of the law, law zoning ordinance and any other relief required. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Chairman Perrin, members of the board. For the record, my name is Stephen Gary, I represent Citywide Properties LLC and its principal, who is Jason Mello, who is to my left with some plans. As Chairman Perrin stated, this is a property, it's in a prominent part of Bridge Street. It's a very large four-family home right now, a four-unit home, with a very large lot to its right if you're facing it. The proposal here is to maintain the exact amount of bedrooms that it was most recently used for, which is sixteen. The petitioner is seeking to reconfigure the inside, so where it is four bedrooms for first two units, each side-by-side are identical. The proposal is to reduce those to three bedrooms, and to add the third floor, that will be exactly the same, to two bedrooms. So it would still maintain sixteen bedrooms as it is now. The difference in this project is the, the owners purchased this from the bank. This was an exed-out, red-ex property, boarded up, dilapidated. It's a very large, very old property with high ceilings, big, wide staircases, wide hallways, big rooms with all kinds of lanes coating and, and things like that that are gonna be renovated. So the proposal is to keep the sixteen units as it is now, and because of that, where it didn't have any parking before, this applicant is adding all parking, so they won't need any dimensional variances at all, no dimensional relief, just adding a parking area to accommodate all of the cars. So each unit would have a designated two-car parking area that meets all the requirements. There's plenty of egress, ingress, how to get in and out of the place, where the, the place where the cars would park that aren't in front of the house. So the only relief that we're looking for is a special permit. The criteria is that by allowing this, it doesn't further detriment the neighborhood any worse than it was, which clearly here, I would argue that in every sense, this project is a betterment to that area. First of all, it's gonna be entirely renovated. My client is going to invest over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into this property. It's a complete renovation from the inside. It's gonna provide housing for, for multiple families, as it did before, but no additional bedrooms beyond what it already was. So as a result of that, I'd like to address some of the notes that the city made. So it's a special permit request, so as long as the determination that there's no adverse effect to the proposed structure, that do not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the city and neighborhood, in view of the particular characteristics of the site, the proposal in relation to that site, and find that the following criteria have addressed, and they have been. Social, economic, community, which will be served as a, by the proposal. And that provides additional clean, comfortable, new housing for people in that area. That has not been used as housing recently, so it's actually not just being currently used, it's recreating much better housing that was there prior to this proposal. The traffic flow, it's gonna have no impact on the traffic. The other sixteen bedrooms that are there, cars presumably parked on the side of the road. In this proposal, they're gonna be off-street. We're not looking for any on-street parking. There's all off-street parking provided on the site. The adequacy of utilities and public services, that's all on-site. We're not proposing to add anything to it. The footprint of the, of the home is not changing at all. The neighborhood character and social structures, it's consistent with that neighborhood. It's only gonna improve the looks of that neighborhood, especially where you come around that bend, and this is a prominent area of Bridge Street. An impacts on natural environment, there won't be any. My client is going to, I assume there's gonna be a question, because it was brought up by the city about stormwater management, stormwater plan, that is gonna be presented, as we'll do that as a condition for the driveway or the parking area. So he will do that through his engineer, and he'll agree that his engineer will work with the city engineer to come up with a, an agreeable plan. The, the potential fiscal impact, including impacts on city services tax base, speaks for itself. It's just gonna get, you know, he's paying more, the property's gonna be assessed more, it's gonna be back on the tax, tax books, and now there's gonna be people living there. Those people are gonna be using the stores, using the area, using the city for various needs, and it's all going to have a positive financial impact. Nothing here is gonna have any negative impact to the city. So the comments by the city, first of all, the first comment, they noted that it's in a TSF, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use, to clear up any confusion with that. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming four-family, and the request is to go from the, extend the use, which is allowed under a special permit, from a four-family to a six-family, and maintain the sixteen bedrooms that were there. So basically, it's a reconfiguration. These units are large units, they're all, the first four units were fourteen hundred square feet, and the third-floor units are eight hundred square feet, so I think that's a total of seventy-two hundred square feet. The inside, these wall, these ceilings are nine feet tall. It's just like the typical older homes. I've been in this home, and I've been up to the third floor. It already has the bedrooms. Somebody was already using it as that, so it just needs to be renovated. Right now, the property accommodates seven parking spaces, and the plan that you see, he's adding all the additional parking again, so each unit will have two spaces per unit. And that, each unit will be, each parking area will be designated per unit. So Unit One would have spaces one and two in Unit Two, so there'd be, because it's stacked, there'd be no issue with, you know, having people to move cars, and it would be smooth. The other issue that the city brought up is that there's a retaining wall on the property, and there is a retaining wall to the north. The wall, we figured that out, the wall is four feet tall all the way around. I think the city had just, might have had a question about asking if that is going to impact any of the parking area. It's not. And along the property, there's an existing fence, so that addresses the issue of fencing. The applicant is either going to repair or replace the existing fence. And there was another question about the trees on the property that might need to be moved. There were two oaks. There is a neighbor who is to the right, who those oaks have had a negative impact on his property, and he has asked my client, as part of doing this, could he remove them? Apparently, in the winter, when the ice is there, it, the tree weighs all the way down almost to the ground, and it's been a root system issue into his yard and his fence, so my client has agreed to do that. But that would be the only removal. There's still plenty of space in the back and around the side of the house for a yard. Again, it's a, it's a large 10,700-square-foot lot, and the house only takes up seventy-two hundred square feet of that. And the other issue is, and I think this came because there was a letter or something, but the ordinance doesn't allow for more than three unrelated individuals to live there. Just as a background, and I'm going to ask my client to speak directly to you about the history of what they've done in the city, but they have no intention of using this house as a boarding house. It's not their business model. It's not what they do. These will be rented to families. They are going to comply with that zoning where there's no, not more than any three unrelated people living in the unit. So it's not going to be something where around the university, you have a house this size, and that would be something that almost any landlord would use just for students, and that is not the case here. That's nowhere near the university. It's nothing they've ever done. In fact, they have property near the university that they don't even use that for. So they have never rented out to students or a boarding house, and I think there were some neighbors that had some concern about that. At least, we saw a letter to that effect. The other issue is this, they mentioned the fire department. Because of the size of this renovation and the amount of the bedrooms, this building is going to be sprinkled. It's going to have its own fire block, so it's going to be a major, major renovation. And the end product is going to look far better than it does right now, of course, because it has a giant X on it, because it's dilapidated, and it's inhabitable, uninhabitable. So what's going to happen? He's going to renovate that, and it's, the finished product is going to look beautiful, and it's going to look organized with the parking, and it's going to be run efficiently by a family business that's been around Lowell for a long time, that has a history of doing properties like this and has recently done so. So you'd allow it, want Jason Mello to address the board briefly?
Certainly. Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Mello?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jason Mello. I am the project manager with Citywide Properties. I would like to provide a brief presentation summarizing our most recent project for the benefit of the board and for the attendees here tonight, just so people can see the quality of the work that we do and to give the attendees an idea of what we plan to do at the property in question. So I have some anecdotes that I'd like to provide to the board.
Thank you.
I'm going to sit this project board up here for the benefit of the attendees, just so they can follow along as I speak.
Although, if you choose, you can speak from here with one of these. You'd rather be closer to your presentation. You just use one of the side mics here? Any one of those microphones turns green?
Great. So again, Chairman, this is just a brief presentation summarizing our most recent project. I hope the presentation can provide some perspective on the quality of our projects and the effort that we put into the neighborhoods that we service. This particular project is in the back Central neighborhood. It's at 96970 Central Street, and we've named the project Gallagher Crossing to maintain historical significance with the city and because of its close proximity to Gallagher Square at the intersection of Central and Gorm Street. Just some background on this project, we suffered a devastating fire loss in June of 2017. Approximately thirty percent of the building was demolished and reconstructed. So the red, to the left of the red line on the before photo, where you can see the burned-out windows, that whole section of building was demolished and reconstructed. The remainder of the building to the right-hand side of that red line underwent a substantial renovation, both to the interior and exterior of the building. And you can actually see the current after photo at the bottom. The project's about eighty percent complete now. We actually appeared before this same board one year ago this month to present this project and ultimately gain approval. So this project, when complete, it's going to provide ten units of market-rate housing. This entire building has been brought up to code. Everything's been upgraded, plumbing, electrical, HVAC. We installed ninety-six percent energy-efficient furnaces. We updated the insulation in the entire building to meet the current energy spec. We're talking about a building that was built in the early 1900s is going to meet the current energy spec code. The entire building, we added a new fire suppression system, including fire alarms and sprinklers, so the whole building has been sprinkled. That not only will benefit our tenants, but that fire safety is going to benefit the community as a whole. We also added state-of-the-art security camera system. Again, that's another improvement that will not only benefit our tenants, but it will benefit the community as a whole. We have cameras on Central Street. We have cameras on Crosby Street. Anyone walking down those streets at nighttime are going to benefit from this upgrade. When the project is complete, we'll be providing 741 square feet of open space, as well as planting four trees, various shrubs, and other landscaping in an urban area. So I think we've come a long way since we appeared before the board one year ago, and I hope this presentation demonstrates our pride of ownership in the city of Lowell and that our strategy here is not quick flips to make a fast buck. We focus on long-term investments in the city and its residents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mello. And I will, I will say that the work you've done on this particular site, we're very familiar with your previous petition, bodes well for how you outlined it tonight and what the added benefits you are bringing to the city and the properties you own. You've committed, you and your company and your group have committed to the city in moving forward in some positive things that are not requirements of suppression and the sprinkler system. That is an added benefit to contain fires and reduce spread, so it also is a public safety issue. And...
And especially, Mr. Chairman, the security systems that they put on. It's like a benefit, obviously, to the tenants, makes the tenants feel more safe, but it also helps the police and anything with any kind of local disturbances in that area, which can be common, you know, in these tight areas in the city. So Mr. Mello and his family wanted to illustrate this project that you just had, although that's not the project before you, to show that this, that this is not a flip. It's not a hit-and-run. It's not to come in, make money, and leave. It's to come in, do this place over, have pride in what they do, put quality work in, don't cut corners, do everything that the city's asking them to do, and provide housing for a lot of people in that area. And not only housing, but parking, and not only parking, but off-street parking.
Very well, very well said. That being said, at this time, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor, please approach. State your name and sign in for the record, please.
My name is Tom Fleming, a lifelong and proud resident of Lowell, Massachusetts. As of now, I live on 83 Fifth Street in the Centerville area. I often drive by this particular property, and it's been an eyesore for quite some time. And I was actually pleased to learn that the Mello family acquired the property and wants to improve it and make good use of it. I think that, I was surprised to learn that it was only a four-family, since there is a big lot right there adjacent to the house. And I think young Jason Mello has showed you the type of work that they do, and I think this should be not only allowed and welcomed, but invited and requested for improvement of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Any others wishing to speak in favor? Certainly.
Good evening. My name's Daniel Donovan, and this is Carrie Sullivan, my wife, and we are both lifelong residents of Centerville. And the main reason we wanted to come up and show our support for this project is we have three very young boys that we're raising in the community, and we want them to grow up in a place where they're proud. And we've seen a lot of the work that's been done around the city and over the last five, 10 years, and it's come a long way. And we're just big supporters of it, and we want to keep seeing, keep going, and keep turning it into a city we can all be proud of.
And I just wanted to add that I agree that it's an eyesore currently, so seeing like the quality of work from like their past projects, we'd love to see that in our own neighborhood as well.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. It's always nice to hear from residents with young children in the city and staying. Any others wish to speak in favor?
Yes, thank you. My name's Sean Michael Kelly. I'm fifty-two years old, longtime current resident of Lowell. I call Lowell my home. I love the city. I'm a licensed plumber. I've been plumbing thirty-four years steadily. I work in Lowell and many other cities, and I see properties like this everywhere. Eighty percent of my work is here in Lowell. I drive down these streets, every other street, you see a building like this, boarded up, dilapidated. Mr. Mello and contractors like himself are amazing. They provide housing and remove eyesores like this building. He does quality work, as you can see, and I think what he's doing is the right thing, and I'm very proud to be here and allow you guys, let me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming out. Any others wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name's Manny Francisco. I live in 78 Whitney Ave. That building's been boarded up for a while. It's ugly. It'll be great to see it get fixed up. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Miguel Colindres. I live next door to 952 Bridge. The retaining wall they were talking about is beautiful. They did it already, and they're doing an excellent job in the area. Actually, that area is good now because a lot of homeless used to go into that house, and I had to deal with that. Now, after they're working with it, I hope all that's going to go away, and I don't have to call the police every day. So, thanks.
Thank you. If I could just trouble you to sign in, please? Sir? Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. My name is Robert Dokus. In January, it'll be three years, I live directly across the street, 957 Bridge Street. January will be three years. I got the home last minute. My only concern when we got the home was directly across the street. For the past two winters, there's been people breaking in, living in there. My daughters even went across the street and gave a lady a blanket and stuff because she just felt so bad. In January or February, I've done a lease-to-own, so every month, a thousand's been put in escrow. So in January, February, it'll be transferred to me. Maybe two months ago, one of Mr. Mello's crew, that yard's been a mess. It's just, so ties have been dropped. People use it as a dumping ground because they know nobody's been boarded up. He went over, cleaned up the whole yard. It looked brand-new. And like I said, the main thing is with the winters, would have been boarded up, people were trying to stay in there. Now, like I said, that was my main concern with getting house, but I was caught between a rock and a hard place, and it was the best option for my family at that point. I have a son. He's in Iowa now, but he comes back, and my daughter's a freshman at UMass Lowell. Now, with what I've seen being done over there just so far, you know, I was kind of thinking maybe after I buy the house, maybe six months or so, sell it and move to New Hampshire like everybody else. Now I actually want to stay there because I feel comfortable with the security cameras that were told. You know, the main thing is with Bridge Street, I have no neighbors to the left. It's 500 yards. It's a school. That was the main thing. I got a four-car garage, you know, and my driveway goes up, so parking is not an issue for us, never has been. But my main concern was what if that building burns down, or what if it gets renovated to the wrong, it gets bought by the wrong person, someone out of state, somewhere wherever, and they rent it to the people that they can't really get their arms around, meaning that they don't know who they're renting to, or they're not local, they don't care. So all my concerns, I mean, it's like I said, all my concerns have been met with that, and I'm actually excited now that knowing that in January or February, when that transfers to me, that I'm in a good spot, and I don't have to worry about my daughter, or like I said, my son when he comes back from Iowa. So I can't say enough good things, so I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
So I have to admit, I did have some trepidation about the project because I moved to Lowell nineteen years ago, and I lived just a few houses away from the property. And my big concern was who was going to be living there. And I used to live in Belvidere, but the houses were so close together, I just didn't like the feeling of it. Moving from Ohio, I had a lot of acreage. And then going to Belvidere, not so much. I was concerned about the green space, but now that I've heard what you're proposing, I kind of like the idea. At first, I wasn't for it, but I am now, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your comments.
Sir, could you just state your name for the record and make sure you sign in, please?
My name is Raymond Russell, and I'm signing out.
Thank you.
Raymond Russell, I live at 984 Bridge Street.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Tiago Cardoso. I live at 73 Dalton Street. I've lived there going on three years in March. So as a new property owner and a resident to the area, I believe it'd be an improvement and definitely help clean things up. And based on the work that the family does, I think only positive things could come from this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name's Louis McCanto. I live at 42 Easy Street. And I, just to echo what everybody else is saying, definitely in favor of cleaning that up and making that property beautiful again instead of being boarded up and making it an eyesore, so definitely in favor.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in favor? Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Just want to, prior to moving, I just want to, I've been on this board for a long time, and Counselor, to your credit and to your client's credit and your company, the amount of people that have come out in favor of this project tonight, in a long meeting night, is a tribute, it's a positive note to what you're trying to do there and what commitment you've given to the city. So, I want to thank everyone for their patience coming here this evening. I know you're low on the batting order tonight, but any other words, Counselor?
No, just that I think and I hope that their next project, they'll be showing this project on the wall and showing what they did. So, and knowing the history of this family, I'm sure I could say that with confidence. So, would ask the board if we could get a favorable support of this project.
Thank you, Counselor. That's it. I'd like to open up the board. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. I want to start with the architectural plans. So, I'm trying to understand what you're actually proposing. In the large four-bedroom units, you're doing a demo of one of the bedrooms and the entrance from the living room into the dining room to combine that space. So, you end up with the same square footage, but you're making a much more livable unit with a larger living room, not quite double the size, but close, and then it opens up into the dining room. So, is that the intent? Is that, am I reading the plan correctly?
Yes, Mr. McCarthy, you are. The dining area is adjacent to what we call a galley kitchen. So, it's the galley kitchen opens up to the dining area, and that's, I guess, the cooking and eating space, which opens up into a larger living room.
Tremendous. So, you're really taking what was an odd quirky kind of four-bedroom unit and making it a beautiful upscale apartment that is, you know, speaking to 2020, which is great.
Thank you.
The access to the units, it took me a little while to figure out how the stairs worked in the back. So, each unit is going to have its own private door off that new porch that you're building.
That is correct.
That leads to their unit. So, the first floor leads directly in, the second floor leads to their private stair that goes directly to their unit, and the third floor leads to a private stair that goes directly to their unit. Am I reading that right?
Yes. Currently, all of the units are interconnected. So, in order to accomplish the design that you've reviewed, we have to create some partitions to close off the first-floor unit to the second-floor unit, for example.
Yep. That's a neat trick to accomplish with that many units here. So, we're looking at what we have currently is 16 bedrooms, and we're gonna have in the new design, 16 bedrooms. And we're looking at a parking plan that, I'm not quite sure how the parking works today because I don't see stacked parking on the site with the strict parking that's there. So, I think there's only five parking spaces currently on the site as far as how I read the existing lines in the pavement out there at the location.
There are, the current parking configuration, there are five lanes that, you know, the engineer and the architect that have both been on-site, they're describing it as existing non-conforming stacked parking. There are five lanes that are 25-plus feet long and about nine feet wide. So, the assumption was that they were intended to be stacked parking spaces.
That's really only a single parking space dimensionally, 18 feet. 36 would be a double.
Right.
You're quite under that. So, it really is a single.
Sure.
I think to represent that, I think existing is only five spaces, in my opinion, not seven, I think is what I heard someone represent, the existing. Is that correct?
I, um, did we describe the existing parking as seven?
The plan shows, I think we added this part. I think, Mr. McCarthy, what it is when you look at the site, there's the existing parking that you can see there, and then they, on this plan, they've added where it says seven and taken off where that was part of a yard there. So, they've added seven and left room for the, to get in and out.
Okay. Well...
So, the proposed stacked parking would be one and two, three and four, five and six, and then just seven would not be proposed.
So, okay. So, I'd like to kind of dive into this layout for the parking, if we could just take a minute, because I don't really see on Bridge Street other locations where we have seven parking spaces backing out onto Bridge Street. And we have a 41 or 42-foot wide curb cut serving six units. By the way, in this site layout, I don't see any allocation for a trash, storage, or rollout bins, which is, I think, a similar problem that we had a year ago with the other project.
That's right. The dumpster fiasco.
The dumpster, right.
For this particular building, rather than have a centralized dumpster, and because the house is split up into two wings, we were going to propose providing the tenants with, each unit would have a rolling cart rather than one central dumpster. So, essentially, we'd have six rolling carts that would be serviced by a waste disposal company, and we could keep three carts on each side of the building to serve their respective units.
Okay. All right.
The only other option there would be public, they could keep all their bins on the side of each unit and wheel them out. But he thinks that that's, Jason thinks that's more efficient to do with a private.
All right. So, we just want to identify where that trash is gonna go in the site plan. The parking, if we rotated it 90 degrees and had a curb cut that was in the 20, 25-foot range, could we still get to 12 parking spaces by going a little deeper on the site? The benefit for me is that we don't have a safety issue with seven people backing out onto Bridge Street, and we don't have a curb cut that's 41 feet wide. And we potentially could even get a strip of green across Bridge Street to soften that whole parking area and maybe screen it. So, I'm looking at and even, you know, you've got a great upscale-looking project here. I just think you want to take it to another step and just make the parking match what you're doing in the building.
Yeah. I know that our architect evaluated several different parking scenarios. The existing double lane, the existing stacked parking lanes, they're currently eight feet wide. So, we have four spaces there. That's 32 feet. And then we have a driveway of, let's call it nine feet. So, we're talking about 41 feet. If we rotated the 36-foot lengths by 90 degrees, I think we would only have like barely, barely six feet of drive lane. And I'm not, I don't think that would, I don't think that would work.
So, in my mind, I was going, rotating it and grabbing five single parking spaces?
Oh.
And putting two more in the back, and then maybe even getting landscaping along the property line to the north, so that your 23-foot dimension there might bring it down to 22 or something, or 21 or something, and get a nice, you know, green strip along that side to offset the green that you're losing in the back. And then, I think you could play with, you have the room. You have the land.
There is a lot of land.
You have the land, I think, to do parallel parking, parking that's perpendicular to the building, and end up with a narrow curb cut that's only gonna be 25 feet, or 24 feet, or 22 feet, rather than the 41 that you currently have. And it would be much safer for the vehicles to back into a drive lane and drive out rather than back out onto Bridge Street, which is, you know...
Not ideal.
Not ideal.
And we could certainly evaluate that. I just, I know that the architect and the engineer had, it was an effort to get 12 parking spots in there that worked and met the dimensional requirements. We can certainly reevaluate of having a row, you know, a row of parallel cars from front to back.
Yep.
My concern would be having to come back to the board and ask for a variance for parking spaces, if we couldn't get 12 spaces to work in that configuration.
And the reason is time is of the essence with this project because of the amount of money that they have to sink into it. Is it possible to do a condition where he works with the, his architect or engineer works with the parking department to come up with a plan that attempts to accomplish what you suggested, Mr. McCarthy?
To narrow the curb cut to something closer to 25 feet and to reduce the quantity of vehicles backing out onto Bridge Street to, you know, two or zero kind of thing. The other thing that might be available is that there's a lane kind of stripe on Bridge Street that's used to separate on-street parking from the traffic lane, that if you had, I mean, you basically could have three on-street parking spaces in front of this property, maybe even four, available to you also. So, I mean, in addition to the 12 that you're providing, you potentially have another three or four on-street parking spaces in front of the property, correct?
Yeah, it's a long, it's a long...
That you're not even talking about. So, I don't know if that's something that you'll work with the DPD on as well. If you get close to the 12 and you say you get to 11 or 10, you say you have two on-street parking spaces to get to the 12 as an option.
I agree that it would definitely enhance the look of the property. It's a great idea. I guess the problem is if it's not doable, then, you know, are we stuck in limbo from an administrative point of view?
I don't see how it wouldn't be doable. You've got plenty of land here. You can easily get 10 by just turning the ones that are there without even going back any further. If you went back just one space for, that's 11 and count one on the street, I think it's doable. I think that this is something that you could definitely get someone to support you and DPD to come up with a plan, especially where you haven't got the drainage done anyway. Why not play with the plan a little bit more? The other thing that you need to provide is access from the parking to the other side in the back. There needs to be a walkway back there because I see people coming in that private, you know, porch area on the south-west corner, going into their three units rather than walking all the way around to the front porch, because it would just be a quicker run for parking. So, I think you probably want to provide some kind of walkway there. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, Mr. McCarthy. There's currently a paved walkway on the left side of the building that goes to the front. Are you suggesting a walkway from the left side of the building around the back?
Yes.
So, the same thing that's on the...
Right.
Okay.
Because, you know, those stairways that are private entrances to those units are great. You open the door, you're in your unit. You don't have to go through, the front hall's lovely, but I mean, it's not like, I mean, you go right into a unit off that porch. It's great.
So, the other suggestion, Mr. McCarthy, would just identify the trash on here and what it's going to be?
Yep.
So, as long as we could phrase that condition...
To work with DPD to develop a site plan that shows parking spaces that minimize the curb cut and backing out onto Bridge Street from the parking. So, the curb cut of getting close to approximately 25 feet wide, maybe. That's the goal.
Yep. Okay.
At least, I think it should be.
And like you said, there is, I'd say four parking spots in front, you know, and there's...
I think you're right. And you're not even, you're not even counting that. That's a big bonus.
The goal was to get all of the parking off the site, I mean, off the street and onto the site, but, you know, it's expected to park in front of your unit. So, I don't think that is a big deal at all because if he's not parking there, there's gonna be neighbors parking there. So, I think that's acceptable, that condition, as well as the trash and the walkway.
Nice job.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
I also am quite happy to see that you're working on this project. So, and this one over here, it looks great.
Thank you. That means a lot to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, thank you for going over the criteria for the special permit, which I think is clearly, clearly lays out everything, that everything in this project is gonna, fits in perfectly with that criteria. And thank you to Mr. Mello for the presentation. I mean, I think, yeah, it's going to be a very, very well-put-together project. I think it makes sense for the neighborhood. To Dennis's point on parking, because it's just kind of dawned on me as well. So, you did make, you made attempts to try to lay out the parking perpendicular throughout the course of the whole length of the area and just can't be done, or is it, or are there, like, how many spots do you think it could fit in if you tried to go from perpendicular all the way down?
The, so, the current double, the current tandem spots are 36 feet long. So, if you consider that length of 36 feet and divided it by eight, which is the width...
So, you could probably fit in another four, maybe four, four spots or something?
Right. So, that's where our challenge was.
So, they'll bring it to nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we did, you know, I wish I would have brought the drafts. We did look at different parking configurations, and really, the 12, the 12 parking spots that you see, they only work at that minimum eight-foot parking spot with requirement. Typically, typically the architect likes to design the spots at eight and a half feet.
Yeah.
So, you know, we really had to go down to that bare minimum in order to get all of these spots off-street.
Yeah. And I agree with you, and I think I'm trying to think outside the box a bit because in addition to the special permit, maybe, and I don't know what my other fellow board members would consider, if we can do a conditional variance on granting, no, really from those spaces, you need 12. You can get in nine. But that, that'll be working with DPD to try to see if it can be, see if it can be done. I mean, that would be something I would, again, I'm not sure my fellow board members would think about that, but if we can condition. Jared, is that something that we could be able to try to work around, or is it?
In this instance, the applicant only needs the special permit. So, I don't believe that they actually need the variance for the parking, that because of the nature of the special permit to extend a non-conforming use or structure, that you could condition some of the changes that a member McCarthy has recommended, but you wouldn't necessarily need to condition a variance contingent upon the number of spaces they're providing.
But as far as the, I mean, as far as the publication, so it was only for the special permit, but, I mean, if we wanted to consider a conditional variance as well for the parking, if they, if it works out that they work with you and you can fit in parking and we give them, say, you can have nine spaces. Because I think Dennis makes a good point, and I agree with you, trying to alleviate the backing, the backing out of stacked parking to Bridge Street, which is, you know, technically could be considered a state highway. It's, you know, going up to Pelham. So, I think we're trying to, I don't, I don't want to have, no, I, I think we're trying to get, we're trying to get to the point here, and I don't want to have Mr. Mello have to come back if we can try to work something out.
Right. And I think, Jared, what are you saying? It might not be necessary to have the variance? You could do it under the special permit?
Yeah, it's the nature of that special permit because it's about extending a non-conforming use or structure. So, they're not here seeking a variance for parking, and if they didn't provide the 12 spaces, they wouldn't necessarily need to seek a variance for...
Okay. Oh, okay. All right.
So, that condition's perfect because we can work with that to do that. And if we don't get, if we don't get those amount of spaces, we still have the spaces on the front, and the project can still go because it's not in the nature of that. I don't think we're required to file for variance.
Well, you have your 12, but I think, like I said, I'm trying to prevent you get your special permit and then having to come back for, hey, we can't, we can't work it out. We need nine. We need to reduce it to nine.
Yeah, if I'm, unless I'm...
That's my understanding, right, Jared?
Unless I'm misunderstanding it, I don't think that we have to do that. I think because we applied for a special permit...
Yeah.
That if we get, that if we go back to the parking department and try to reconfigure this the way Mr. McCarthy suggests that everybody wants, including my client, and we can only get nine, I don't think that we have to get a variance. Is that... including my client, and we can only get nine, I don't think that we have to get a variance. Is that?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Because the special permit relates to, um, the impact on traffic and safety and things like that. So, you're considering those elements by granting a special permit, um, in, in the course of this specific special permit, which is, uh, unique from other, it's not 11 point, I can't remember the exact section, but it's Section 4.5 special permit, and so that has different considerations.
All right, so we don't have to consider that, um, we don't have to consider that at all. I was just trying to, you know, again, trying to save everybody.
And I, I get that, and we appreciate it, but, um, it makes it a lot easier to comply with what, uh, Mr. McCarthy suggested.
Okay, um, and, uh, I guess the only other things I had, certainly the stacked parking, you'll, uh, you know, conditioned, you know, that each space must be dedicated to. Well, again, that's a, that goes.
If we end up with stacked.
It goes back, that goes back to the parking thing.
Yep.
Uh, but I think there was one condition that stormwater, um, was, there's a proposed condition for a stormwater about the, the applicant shall submit a stormwater mitigation plan and, um.
And, and he will, he will, he, he will agree as a condition that his engineer will work with the city engineer to come up with a sufficient plan.
Okay, so, yeah, we.
Consistent with what the city's concern is.
Okay.
Which is no concern, it's just noting that he does need that because of the amount of pavement that he's putting in.
So, do we don't need to, we don't really need to condition that, Jared?
I think we do.
We do, yeah.
You can still include that as a condition if you'd like.
All right. Yep.
So.
Oh, great job again. I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to now seeing this project go forward, and I wish you the best of luck. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
Uh, to you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep it brief. Um, I think all, all my colleagues, um, outlined the, the concerns that I had, and it's been addressed. So, so thank you, um, Mr. Mello, for your, for your investment in this property and the city. As the chairman says, you, you're very responsible. You know, the, the overview of the Gallo crossing site, if it's anything like that, it's going to be a good project. So, I thank you and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Ben. Philip?
Well, Mr. Chairman, actually, uh, that is my neighborhood, so I have seen it. That is a really great job. Then I just want to say thank you for coming to support the project. Um, thanks, thanks for your patience. I would like to see this, uh, project go forward. I don't have any questions. I don't have any issues with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Mark?
I'm confident that the, uh, the, the design and intended usage of this building will definitely serve to the betterment of this sensible neighborhood. Uh, so as a result, I'm in favor of this project. But I don't mind saying, and perhaps just as significantly, I'm familiar with the quality of Mr. Mello's work and character. And when developers like the Mello family come to town and make the quality investments that they have, they deserve to be publicly commended.
Thank you, Mr. Brier.
Thank you, Mark. So, Counselor, um, we are looking at, uh, the, the trash, just as, as a condition, just provide what that trash outline is as far as the private, and then if you're going to do some screening and location and that. As far as that parking, um, scenario or the reconfiguration, um, that'll be in flex with DPD because you are taking into consideration what Mr. McCarthy is bringing forward. Doesn't, doesn't require to be a condition of this special permit. I don't want to get into, you know, we can't get into creating conditions for variances that aren't needed to be sought or approved. So, I'm very confident in Counselor and, and Mr. Mello's ability to work with DPD to look at that parking outline.
Yeah, no, it was, it was a great idea, and that's, it's, it's, it's good to have another architect look at it.
It's very beneficial for, uh, for the, for the board and for the citizens and, uh, the petitioner, while to take under consideration the professionalism that's strewn upon us through various members of this board, and they're very well appreciated, both Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Callahan. So, we'll look at those two as conditions, and we'll move forward with one vote for a special permit. That said, I make a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I can make a motion on ZB 2019 dash 48 for 956 and 958 Bridge Street for special permit approval under Section 4.5.3 to add two units to the third floor of an existing four-unit structure with the condition that the applicant will work with DPD, uh, to, on a parking plan to reduce the backing out on a Bridge Street and a trash, trash plan and screening plan as well.
The walkway?
There was a walkway.
And the walk.
And the rear, rear walkway.
And the rear walkway as well.
Southwest.
Yep.
Corner of the building. Those are acceptable, Counselor?
Yes.
And the stormwater drainage.
Stormwater drainage, oh, the storm, and, yeah, the stormwater drainage, uh, which the applicant shall submit to a stormwater mitigation plan with an O and M plan that retains water on-site.
That being said, may I have a second?
Second motion?
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve of condition.
Member Peck?
Approve of condition.
Member Callahan?
Approve of conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Great, thank you, gentlemen.
Initially approved, thank you. Mr. Mello, thank you, and you're.
Good night.
For your consent.
Good night.
That being said, we're moving forward. For variance. ZB 2019 dash 49 for variance at Jillian and Jose Silva at 24 Bigelow Street. Section 5.1, the applicant is seeking variance approval at 24 Bigelow Street. The applicant is seeking approval for the construction of an answerer structure that does not meet the side setback, the setback requirements pursuant to 5.1 of the Lowell Zone ordinance and any other relief required. The proposed project is located in suburban, single-family SSF zoning district. Is the petitioner here this evening? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Alberto Silva. I'm, uh, here on behalf of Jose and Jillian. They had, uh, scheduled a vacation months ago, so they're not able to attend the meeting, so I'm here on their behalf tonight.
Okay, uh, just for a matter of record, we, it was brought to my attention that. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your kindness. So, just wanted, for the record, uh, it was brought to our attention, there was no posting on the lot. Do we have confirmation through DPD? I believe as of yesterday or as of today? Today. There was no public posting on the property.
I don't have a copy of the photo for, in the file, but it's possible there might be a digital copy that, um, Christine saved. So, we could take a look real quick just to see if there was one.
Yes, that, that would be, that would be appropriate since it's been brought to our attention. We just need to confirm that. So, we just need to confirm, um, just so you're aware. If you're going to be able to check it now. Yeah. Just so you, just so you're aware of, um, part of procedural is that the, the posting is, is maintained until the hearing is completed for approval or denial. It's been brought to the board's attention that it was not seen on-site today. Are you familiar with, with that posting maybe? I know you're.
No.
Here, okay. So, I think we'd like to do at this point is if we just, um, postpone or delay your petition, I'll bring in the next petition. Now, give us some time for the, the city to go look it up so we can move forward tonight.
Sure.
Just once, if there's a digital copy on record, then we can move forward with this petition. If not, we're going to need to continue until we see that posting. Okay? Thank you very much. So, that being said, we'll move to other business on a delay. Uh, for new business, we've got a minor modification at 908 966 Lawrence Street. Is that petitioner here? There was special permit for River, Riverbank Properties LLC at 908 9696, strike that, 966 Lawrence Street. Section 12.9, Section R, the applicant is seeking a minor modification to a previous special permit approval granted February 25th, 2019 to Riverbank Properties LLC. The special permit was to open a contractor's garage within the existing building at 908 966 Lawrence Street. The building is in the traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district, and the use requires a special permit under Section 12.9 R. The applicant is seeking a minor modification to the previous approval to add 3,390, 300, 3,039 square feet addition to the second floor of the building. The addition will not increase the building's footprint. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Counselor. How are you?
Minor modification, please.
Yeah, so, uh, we were here in, in February to get a minor modification to keep the use and to, uh, to keep it as the contractor's garage. So, now, you know, the, the change now is to put in addition on the second floor, so we're not going out, we're not going sideways or, or deep. We're just going up another floor just for his offices. So, the original offices were on the first floor. It didn't make sense because of the warehouse space, trying to, forklifts and everything else, so this is why we're proposing to put in addition on the second floor.
Thank you. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor, in favor, in favor, that portion of public hearing is not closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition, in opposition, that portion of public hearing is not closed. Like to open up to the board. Ben?
Uh, to you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I think this modification can be granted. Um, I don't see any detriment, uh, in granting the special permit. So, uh, wish you the very best of luck, sir.
Thank you, Ben. Philip?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo, um, Ben's, uh, sentiments. Uh, I think it's a good project, so, um, good luck.
Thank you, Philip. Sean?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any, uh, comments or concerns on this. The addition, uh, is, does not, uh, require any further relief under Section 5.1. It's, I believe it is a minor, uh, minor modification that could be approved by this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I agree, um, it's a minor modification, but it's a major improvement.
Beautiful, beautiful. It's going to be totally different.
It, it looks great. It's no longer a garage. It looks like a showcase. It's got.
And that's his, that's his goal.
My gosh.
That's the goal.
It's, 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 it might be a minor modification, but what an improvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Yeah, I would concur with my colleagues. Uh, good work, men. Are you familiar with the comments from the fire department?
Yes, yes, so, so we'll submit that at that time.
Okay, great. Best of luck.
Great, thank you. So, uh, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good use for a minor modification, and as Dennis has stated, it does make a, uh, it's a major benefit, uh, for you operationally and, and, and from the aesthetics standpoint, it, it certainly bodes well. And we appreciate you looking at those, uh, options to improve, um, not only what's beneficial but for you, but for the neighborhood as well. And that's, that's a, that's a testament to you. We do have. Yes, well, as far as we meant the requirements. So, where we're going to remain as we do with this modification, as we move to the vote, we're going to maintain the, the original requirements of the ruling and of the, of the vote at that time. Yeah, on each, in, each individual comment, but we can place them into the record as a whole. We won't have to read them out. You'll run out of steam.
Just read the, the, uh, the requirements, um, for the minor modification. A, whether or not the proposed change is significant enough to require a new public hearing, including notice to a butters. B, if the board votes that the proposed changes are minor, the board must vote to accept the changes and add the revised site plan to the file. C, if the board votes that the proposed changes are significant, the board must vote to require the applicant to file a new application with the board. So, Jared, how do we, how would we structure a vote on that? We just.
Well, if the board chooses to, uh, decide that it's a minor modification, I think you just could pass a motion recognizing that it's a minor modification and then.
And approve it?
And approve it in that.
Okay, so, it does, so the vote, sort of, so the, so the motion will be on, uh, Mr. Chairman, what was this one? ZB, ZB 2019 dash seven on 908 966 Lawrence Street to, uh, vote to accept that as a minor modification and to approve such minor modification.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Accept and approve minor modification.
Member Peck?
Uh, approve modification.
Member Callahan?
Accept and approve minor modification.
Member McCarthy?
Accept and approve minor modification.
Member Brier?
Acceptance and approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
We also have been approved for your minor modification. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
To the city.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. That being said, if we can move back to ZB 2019 dash 49 at 24 Bigelow Street, we're, we have receipt of a digital copy of the posting at.
Staff were unable to locate a digital, uh, copy of the photo showing the sign was posted at the property. It may have been posted at some time, but we did not find it in our records.
What is the wish of the board? Mr. McCarthy?
I, I think that we owe the neighbors especially, um, notice, and I think that's the whole point of the posting. So, I think without it, people in the neighborhood aren't maybe, um, given the full benefit of that posting, so.
Okay, that being said, I'd like to make, um, comment that.
They sent out a mailing.
Excuse me?
Copies of stuff that they mailed out apparently to the neighbors.
We're talking about the public posting that needs to be remained on, on the site.
Okay.
Um, it's been, it's a requirement of, of the petition, and it has been, uh, the past practice that the precedent's been set by this board to maintain that the posting is on-site, confirmed with DPD. And then if it's brought, uh, to my attention by any, uh, board member or a butter, that it's not posted, that the requirement says it is. So, I do make a recommendation, we, we continue this, and we get that posting up. Continuance till next meeting is only the 14th. Would it be the requirement for it to be posted for the public hearing? Qualified days or?
It's two-week requirement for the posting, so it'd be October 31st, this Thursday.
Okay. We would be able to move forward to November 14th. So, we're going to move to continue this to November 14th. I understand, sir, you're here instead of your brother-in-law or your brother?
My brother.
Your brother, okay. Um, if you can just find that posting, get it up, take a picture of it, send it over via email to DPD. We'll be able to move forward with this petition on November 14th.
I think he's got a few people's emails here. JAlves@LowellMass.Gov, is that it?
Yes, he'll provide you with the business card.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
And at that point, we'd be able to move forward with this petition. So, as soon as he gets it up, snap that photo off.
Sure.
Send it through email and, and we sorry for the inconvenience, but it's part of the requirements.
No, that's.
Okay, so, we're going to seek a motion for a continuance to November 14th.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, on ZB 2019 dash 49 for 24 Bigelow Street. I'd like to make a motion to continue this petition for public hearing on November, Thursday, November 14th, 2019.
May I have a second?
Second motion?
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve of continuance to November 14th.
Member Peck?
Uh, approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve of continuance to November 14th.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to November 14th.
Member Brier?
Approve continuance.
Member Jamina?
Approve continuance.
So, my petition has been continued to November 14th. This is the public notice for that continuance. There'll be no other public notice, uh, in the newspaper or to a butters. And we'll see you on the 14th, sir. Thank you very much. Moving forward under other business, we have a minor modification at 557 Varnum Ave. ZB 2017 dash 34, a special permit, GPG Varnum LLC, 557 Varnum Ave, Section 4.5.2 and 6.1.3. The applicant is seeking a minor modification to a previously special permit approval granted November 2, 23rd, 2015 and amended August 14th, 2017. The special permit approval was to convert an existing building formerly used as a nursing home into 13 residential units. The amendment increased the number of units to 18. The project in the suburban neighborhood, single-family SSF zoning district, and requires special permit approval under Section 4.5.2 for a non-conforming use in Section 6.1.3 for the off-street parking. The applicant is seeking a minor modification to adjust the location of the dumpster and for other minor site changes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Perrin. Good evening, Board. Uh, I'm Said Coats on behalf of GPG Varnum, the old owner of the property located at 557 Varnum Avenue. As Chairman Perrin mentioned, I'm here before you this evening to request your approval of minor modifications to the site plan. Uh, I also want to point out that, uh, construction is underway on the project that the board has previously approved. We're making great progress. We're entering the latter stages of, uh, construction on the interior of the building, and we're moving to, uh, complete construction and site work on exterior of the building. The extent of these minor modifications relate to the exterior work, uh, site work. They are effectively minor adjustments to parking and other site details. I just want to emphasize that, uh, we respected all of the constraints on the project that the board. I just wanna emphasize that we respected all of the constraints on the project that the board has previously approved. We were very diligent and conscious of maintaining the parking count at thirty-one as previously approved. The building envelope is not affected. The number of housing units stays the same at eighteen. There are literally no material changes to the project. What has changed is that for our electrical service, National Grid will be installing a pad-mounted transformer. So we just made accommodations for that in the site plan to make sure that what we're building correlates one-for-one with what the board has seen, what the board has approved. The pad-mounted transformer, if you look at the site plan that you may have with you, it basically is on the pretty much north-easterly, north-westerly corner of the property. It will be located in what was previously designated as a parking space. Again, I mentioned that we were very conscious to keep the parking count neutral to what was previously approved. So what we did was, we just slightly adjusted going up to the top towards the east and northerly border of the parcel. We basically made a slight adjustment to the location of the dumpster pad. We also were able to get more details on the type of dumpster that we're gonna use. I just have a quick handout, if I may.
Sure.
So after consulting with our potential waste management vendor, Charles George, we decided to go with two, two cubic yard dumpsters. You'll see that in the top-left corner, they're approximately forty inches tall. So that's three feet, four inches. They're going to be placed on wheels, so effectively, the truck just needs to get to the vicinity of the dumpster pad. They've given me approval that they do it all the time. The driver gets out, basically pushes the two-yard dumpster to the front of the truck, it's a front loader. Then they just dump it, they push it back into the fenced area for the dumpster pad. We're gonna have two of those two-yard dumpsters, so the dumpster pad will be ten feet by eight feet. That will allow for an approximately three-to-four-foot walking aisle and a dumpster on each side, two pickups per week. To accommodate for that dumpster pad, the slight adjustment in location, we effectively moved one of the parking spaces, gonna shift a little bit and extend beyond the currently paved area. We're not proposing any new paved area. We're gonna put a bed of gravel there. I think the site plan actually shows what I would deem to be a conservative estimation of how far, or worst-case estimation of how far the car would need to be extended out, because we actually don't need that full width to access the dumpster. So we're probably only gonna need to come beyond the pavement by about four feet or so, so it should be very minimal, and they'll have access to wheel the dumpster out. The other two modifications to the site plan are the addition of sight lighting, and that's just to make sure, we're not sure if we're gonna exercise this option, but we'd like to have it approved in a site plan. We just wanna make sure that tenants can feel secure as they're leaving their vehicles. There is an overhead street light, so it provides some lighting, but we are noticing that at night it does feel a little bit dark. So again, it would probably be like a three-foot lighted bollard, just to provide a little bit of sight light, so people feel more secure. And lastly, the handicap spaces, we're just looking to swap those three accessible spaces with three non-accessible spaces.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that. Like to open this up at this time. Anyone wishing to speak? In favor, in favor, in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
My name is Janice Underwood, and I'm one of the abutters, six Cedar Lane. My concern that he took down that hill on Meadowview, and he's, he's putting those lights up, and he also, there's gonna be more parking spots. But right now, every time it rains, it's a swimming pool. So when it becomes a swimming pool, where would these cars go to park? Every time it rains, it's a swimming pool.
Do you have, as you brought this to DPD, or I, I can't, I can't speak, I can't speak to that, so...
I don't understand. I mean, why doesn't he do something about that? And what, if, if this gave him extra parking spaces, and if the tenants can't use it because they would need boots, it's deep.
Sir? Yes, if you could, if you could answer...
So, so right now, it's not, so we're doing porous pavement there, and it's not set up for the twenty-seven inches of the layers to make a drain right now. That's the issue. The only reason why we put the stone that you see now, just to help a little bit until we get to the point where we have to excavate everything out and do the twenty-seven inches of layers of the p-stone. It's a whole setup from the DPD that tells us how to do it, to drain it into the ground, so I think that's what you see.
So that it's not gonna be a swimming pool?
No, 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 this has made it approved by them, so they approved us to do...
Tell me something, how many parking spots are here?
So, in the... Excuse me, ma'am, but it's a public hearing. We're not, we, we don't have, you can address the board?
Okay.
If you, if you wanna bring that, if you wanna bring that forward, I could take a look at it.
Okay.
Might be more helpful. We wanna answer your questions, but I can't have you go directly to the petition.
It's hard for me to see.
Okay.
Okay, right here, that's where he's gonna put lighting, I believe. This is where the policy is gonna get fixed.
Certainly, ma'am, we wanna make sure that your concerns are heard and your, and your questions,
Thank you.
to, the answers to your questions are, are, I've answered and met. So I appreciate that. I as well can't see those numbers either, so it's part of the way the plan is.
It's very difficult, and like I say, when I go, I have to go, you know, enter the street that way, and I see a swimming pool all the time.
Yeah. The gentleman addressed that, it's gonna be pervious and it's gonna be drained.
Okay, it's always gonna be fixed, that's my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else, any others wish to speak in opposition? In opposition? May I... Ma'am, ma'am, excuse me, excuse me, if you may, please, just approach the podium, state your names for the record, and then you can direct your questions through me.
It's pretty much, Angela Law, I'm at twenty-one Cedar Lane, right behind
Okay.
the nursing home. I was pretty much concerned with the same with my neighbor. Every time I drive by, when it's heavy rain, it's just a big puddle of rain there, it's like, it doesn't move. So it's most of the time when it's heavy rain, just curious as if you're gonna, you know, address that issue?
Yep, that's, that's in the plan to be addressed.
Yes, certainly I can agree, and certainly understand your, your concern as neighbors, if you drive by and there's standing water well over two, three, four feet, whatever it may be, I don't recall what, what you may have stated, but as the gentleman said, it's gonna be pervious, it's a process that's gonna go through, and the, and the end result will be, will be deterred from some, it being a swimming pool, for no better term.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is that satisfying? Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. With my memory recall, if I spoke in favor, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor, in favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Van?
Uh, to you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think these modifications or upgrades can be approved. You know, the, the lighting, the dumpster lineup was set up, and, and the handicap spaces. So I, I think these are minor, and I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with Vice Chairman Peck, these are... Yeah, you run into these issues, obviously, with the National Grid, and you know, now you have to read, readjust what National Grid does, and then that puts everything else, but, but you're maintaining the same, not the same parking, number of parking spots, and I believe all the, the, I understand the concerns of the residents, and those will be alleviated once construction continues to go, and I'm actually, I will say, I'm glad, I'm glad to see the project is finally getting off the ground and getting, getting going, so...
Thank you.
Understanding the history of this, this particular project with this board, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'm also glad to see this project going forward, and I'm not surprised that National Grid has chosen to provide a transformer on a pad, so, anyway. Have you thought of recycling dumpsters, or is one being provided for recycling material?
It's actually a single-stream recycling.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the second dumpster, that's the purpose of it?
Uh, both of them actually, a single stream, yeah.
Great, great to hear.
That's, that's just part of their process, it's included, and it's all just mixed in and sorted at the facility.
Terrific.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dennis. Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a good project. As long as you can mitigate, you know, the concerns of, of the neighbors, I think it's a good idea. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Mark?
Modifications of mine are resulting in no significant change. I'll vote in favor.
Thank you. So I wanna thank members of the community coming out and getting the questions, the answers, and the appropriate forum. I too am extremely happy this project is moving forward, and I'm hoping that as we do move forward, we maintain communications. It's a minor modification, but we're all familiar with this project. Citizens and the neighbors of that community, you know, they take ownership of their, of their neighborhood and their community, so their presence is here each time. You've done your due diligence, keep moving forward in that line, and in the open communications you can have with the, with the neighborhood group is always, always a bonus. So I do appreciate you coming out this evening. That being said, may I seek a motion?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB two thousand seventeen dash thirty-four for five fifty-seven Varnum Ave to accept proposed modifications as minor and to approve such modifications.
May I have a second?
I second.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve minor modifications.
Member Peck?
Approve minor modification.
Member Callahan?
Uh, accept modifications as a minor and approve.
Member McCarthy?
Approve minor modifications.
Member Briere?
Approve modifications.
Member Jamina?
Approve minor modifications.
Petition has been approved. Continue the good work and success of it, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Moving forward under other business, we have minutes for approval for October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Has all board members had an opportunity to read, review, make any comments or edits? That being said, may I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Accept the minutes.
Member Peck?
Accept the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Accept minutes for October seventeenth.
Member McCarthy?
Accept the minutes.
Member Briere?
Acceptance.
Member Jamina?
Abstain.
Okay, that being said, we have no other business. Sir, if you wanna speak to Jared on the way out, he'd be certainly happy to help you.
Yeah, just clarification exactly what he needs to put up.
Okay.
Because he got a letter from a Christine McCall, it doesn't say anything about putting up any posting on the property. Says about mailings, which he did.
Yeah, okay, at the end of the meeting, they could, they could speak directly, DPD can speak directly to you and clarify that and provide you with the appropriate information. Hopefully that helps. Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? Only comment I have, we have the election coming up. And I hope everyone takes the opportunity to go out with their civic duty and exercise their right to vote in our great community on Election Day. And be aware that the clocks are turning back, and it'll be, it'll be much darker. Be aware of pedestrians and the safety, and particularly on Thursday evening with our little goblets and goblings for Halloween. I wish them fair weather. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, sir, I wanna echo your comments about doing our civic duty, going out to vote. And I also wanna welcome Ms. Caciano to, to, to the city. So you have a great department, Mr. Alvarez, Ms. McCall, great, great planners, so welcome, and you know, we all look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
We, we are inspired by the continued growth of our DPD department with youth and vigor, and we do wish you the best. We're a particular board, but we're, we're very appreciative of the work that is done by the entire planning department, and we're excited to have you on board. We wish you the best of luck, and welcome to Lowell. Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
That being said, I seek a motion to adjourn.
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.